And welcome to the Cedar Falls Committee of the Whole Meeting this June 4th, 2018. I'll now call this meeting to order. We will have four items for discussion this evening for council. One is the water quality initiatives, the Streetscape project update, FY19 cash management report, and bills and payroll. Starting off, we'll do the water quality initiatives, and I'll invite our stormwater specialist, Shushil Tuladur, up to the microphone and take it away. Make sure that microphone's right there for us, please.
Check.
We're good.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Shushil Tuladur, stormwater specialist. Thank you for your time, giving me an opportunity to talk something about the water quality initiative, what we do here under our stormwater program. This is my first committee of the whole meeting, so it feels great. Thank you. Thank you again. So today I have three different topics for you. One is interactive web story map. It's an application. The second one, I'm going to talk about, a little bit about the CAPS project, which you're seeing here, a bio-retention cell model. And the last, I'm going to talk about the education and outreach, what we have done recently, so far, for the education and outreach. So the first one, I would like to start off with the interactive web mapping of base management practices in the dry run creek watershed. It's basically telling a story through an interactive story map. Last year, sometime in December, the idea came to incorporate all bio-base management practices that the city has installed till date on platform so that the people can easily know about what are the practices that the city has installed so far. So story map, again, is a great tool for education and outreach. The main idea behind this story map is to learn about different base management practices in the watershed. It shows locations and provides details of each practice. So this map is now live, and it's open to the public under stormwater program. The left panel of the page, there is a dry run creek watershed map, there is a link, and when we click the link, it takes you to the page. If you have, by the way, if you have any questions at any time, just stop me. I would more than happy to answer questions if you may have any. So the first page that comes up when you click that link is the dry run creek watershed. So this map has the capability of like panning and zooming in and out, and then there's a different watershed. If you click one of the watershed, it gives an area, what size of the watershed is that? And there are different dots in there. If you can see here, red dots represent bio-retention cells, blue dots represent permeable paver, green dots represent stream bank stabilization. So again, the story map highlights these practices that the city has installed in partnership with the Black Hawk Soil and Water Conservation District. Now, when we go, now if you go to the permeable, second tab, that only talks about the permeable pavement system. So on the left-hand side, if you scroll it down, it describes about the permeable pavement. There is a link that takes you to the brochure that talks about the permeable pavers, and there are different, these are the different practices that the city has installed. And if you click, there is a blue link here, that if you click that, it takes you to the, so it takes you to the pictures of those practices, like before and after, and then when you click that, it has several pictures in there. I'd rather use my, I'm more used to this. All right, and there is a link there that takes you to the pollutant load reductions table. So this lists all the permeable pavement systems, where it has all the numbers. For example, let's say total load reduction, total suspended solids load reduction, total phosphorus load reduction. So this table lists all those numbers in here. X that out, and then this is the, second tab is the bio-retention cells again, and where again, if you click that link, talks about the bio cells. There are different pictures in here, and if you click that link, it will show you to the table again. And then third one is the stream bank stabilization. We got two so far, and one in the university brands, and the second one in the college And if you scroll down, again, if you click to that link, and again, it takes you to the picture, like before and after thing. So this map will be updated as more practices will be implemented in the community. So now, the second that I have is the next story map that's still in progress. It's not finished yet. This will be Cedar Falls Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan. So the idea here in the story map will be to collect all the information that the home builders, developers, or the builders would like to know about what they should be focusing on before they implement the stormwater pollution prevention plan on their construction sites. So the second one, that I'll be talking about, the CAPS project. Two main projects, bio-retention cell model and a bio-retention cell design. Today I will be talking about the bio-retention cell model. Two bright students under CAPS program designed this bio cell model for education and outreach. So we have this model here. It's basically a landscape depression where the main focus is to collect the stormwater before it goes to the storm sewer lines and ultimately to the river. So main idea here is to collect that water here, and there's a different layer here. So above ground, it looks like a flower bed, and below ground, it has a different engineered subgrade layers, like soils, mulch, gravel, rocks, stones in here. So the main idea here is to collect that stormwater. It percolates down through the different layers. When it goes down, the water's going to stay here for the time being temporarily, and it slowly percolates down. As it moves down, it collects all the contaminants. For example, native planting, it has deep root systems. So what it does, it helps to uptake the pollutants from the bad water. And then when it goes down, and again, there is a modified soil layer, again, helps to collect all those contaminants, uptake those contaminants before it goes down to the, there's a white pipe layer, which is perforated, before it goes down to the storm sewer lines. So after the water gets purified, then the water travels through this pipe. And if there's overflow, let's say if it gets high rain and the water is, and this layer is oversaturated, there is one pipe sticking out on here, on the sides, this will come out from here. So this is the model the story students have designed, and this model has already been displayed at some of the outreach events, like Earth Day event and Soil and Water Conservation Week. So the third that I would like to talk about today is the education and outreach, what we have completed recently. The first one is the Middle Cedar River Open House, which was completed in January 2018. We presented what we do here. The second one, the Iowa Home Soul. It's a joint booth with the city of Waterloo and the Black Hawk Soil and Water Conservation District. The third one is the Sierra Valley Home Builders Association Meeting, where I presented to the home builders and developers, talking about the stormwater pollution prevention plan. The fourth one, Art Week Celebration, that organized by Recycling, Reuse Technology and Transfer Center at UNI. The fifth one, Soil and Water Conservation Week, organized by Black Hawk Soil and Water Conservation District, where I presented story map there, and also set up a booth presenting the bio cell model and all the education brochures that we have, talking about the stormwater pollution. And we also publish articles and currents. We have Dry Run Creek Advisory Board, where the city is a vice president, representing as a vice president. This meeting is held once a month, where we talk about the issues and what are the solutions for some of the issues, and what we can do about to improve the stormwater Some of the upcoming education and outreach, one is upcoming in less than two weeks, which is on June 16th, a practical backyard tour. And there is another one, Community Conservation Workshop. It will be sometime in midsummer. The details have not been finalized yet. So this is all I have for you so far, and thank you again for your time. Any questions?
Great job, Shushil. Anything from council to Shushil?
Thanks for the presentation. That's really interesting. I find that fascinating, actually.
Thank you.
How often do we have to test as a city, the various streams and creeks in town and the dry run? Is that considered impaired yet at this point?
It is still, yes.
Okay. Are we improving, or what's the measurement that we go to become not?
Having all those practices, I would say it's improving. We have dry run creek watershed improvement, where the Black Hawk Soil and Water Conservation District, they come up with their annual report, where they talk all and everything about the improvement of this dry run creek watershed and where it stands now. They have done a lot of study, like how's the bank eroding, and stuff, those kind of things.
So they're doing that annually?
Uh huh.
Okay. Now, are they testing the water itself, or the soils? They go a foot deep, six inches deep?
Different, different, as you're like a university in northern Iowa, and Black Hawk Soil and Water Conservation District, they do test the dry run creek watershed. They have their thirteen, they have their sites throughout the watersheds, where they collect the water samples and test for different parameters.
So after a rainfall, when there's potential for runoff of various contaminants and things, are they testing at that point to see if there's retention, or these retention cells are working to prevent the impurities from getting in the stream?
And that's the plan. For the University Avenue Bio Cell Project that's upcoming, we will have some monitoring wells for these bio cells, where we're going to test like before and after, to see how it's working. When we talk about the bio cells, that it purifies the water, so it's really doing its job or not, so to know that we're going to do some testing out there.
So you know it's working?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, that's all we have.
Anyone else?
What's the projected life of a bioswale with the contaminants? Are we looking at, if the native plants are contaminated, do we have to replace them every so often?
Yes, maintenance is required. So when we plant the native plants out there, it does help remove the contaminants, but again, the plant might die out, so the maintenance is required to replace those plants, and when we do that, it's going to work again, and maintenance is minimal, I would say, but it does require maintenance.
You mentioned you were at the Home Builders Conference or something. Do you feel like the home builders in this area are implementing these kinds of things and developments? Do we have any requirements along those lines?
That's one of the things that we are discussing at the Dry Run Creek Advisory Board. That's why we sit down and talk about this, like how we can involve some of these home builders, developers, to incorporate some of these practices. And in fact, some of this, when I was at in the meeting, some of the builders, they do implement some of the base management practices, like permeable driveway, and they have done that. So it's feasible, but again, it's take time, and it needs some sort of coordination, and meetings, and talking about it.
Are you aware of any communities that have requirements along those lines, new subdivisions or anything?
Not the I know.
Anything else? Great job, Shushil.
Thank you so much. Thank you for your time.
Appreciate it. Moving on to the next item is the Streetscape project update, and Director Stephanie Sheets is here to inform us on that.
Well, I don't have such a nice model to show, but it'll do. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for taking the time to talk about Streetscape a little bit. I want to start off with some background on this project, and I've been in front of council before, talking about the Streetscape project, and that's been a couple years. So that was in July of 2015. And at that July meeting, after talking a little bit about some of the background, and then showing the plan, which I'll get into in just a minute, what we landed on was noting that the Main Street Board had approved the plan, and council then received and filed that, and then we looked to incorporate it into our capital improvements plan from that point. So that was in the fall of 2015. And I'm going to go over just a little bit about how that plan that I'm showing on the screen, that you also had in your packet, came together. And just a real brief overview of that is that in working with Community Main Street, we recognize that there are different areas of the downtown. We're also looking at how the downtown might be expanded, or kind of represented in terms of the Streetscape part of it. We recognize that different corridors had different functions, different appearance, and therefore different needs. And we split those up into four different corridor types, the A, A1, B, and C that you see on this chart here. And A was the parcade. A1 is West First Street. B corridors were basically the commercial expansion areas of the downtown, and C was the residential perimeter, more or less, to kind of define those areas. And we looked at each of those types of corridors and discussed the types of amenities or elements in terms of brick sidewalks, benches, trashcans, bump outs, those types of things. What might be appropriate, what corridors? And then we listed those amenities and estimated the costs for that. So that was a little bit of the background of how we came to that plan. This is just an excerpt, kind of zooming in on one portion of the plan, just showing the Second Street area, how that was going to be a, I forget the reference, right, a B-level corridor, and where you might locate bump outs, where you would have the different types of decorative lights, and those types of elements. So that's just zooming in on that plan to show you an example. Then moving that forward, we started integrating into the capital improvement plan budgeting for this. And in the capital improvement plan, starting in fiscal 16, we identified four different blocks that were coordinated with our pavement management plan in terms of doing improvements there. Same thing when we came the next year for the fiscal 17 to 22 capital improvement plan. And then prior to the current capital improvement plan that we have in place, we started talking a little bit more with Main Street about the implementation. And we went through discussing a project that was grouped versus being block by block. And that's kind of in the block by block stage, possibly taking around 15 or 20 years to implement. So we thought that it would help with the fundraising, the portion that Community Main Street was going to try to assemble to help support the project of doing a grouped type of project. And so that's what I'm here today to talk about. We started whittling that down into the areas that are listed here, and the map then shows those more specifically. But we looked specifically then at State Street, having recently been reconstructed. That was one where then we can go put in decorative lighting, trashcans, that kind of thing, without impacting the cost of getting the street redone. And those are finishing elements that can be done after a reconstruction project. Washington, the same way, is in a very good condition, having been redone a while back. And so that was another one where we do have some decorative lights along there, have started to add trees. I think Community Main Street worked maybe last year or the year before on some tree planting in that area, and how could we kind of finish out that corridor. Sixth Street, just being reconstructed last year in the area of the downtown, now can be in the program for the added elements. And then the other two that have had quite a bit of conversation are Second Street and Third Street, and those have been in the pavement management plan at different times, but we continue to evaluate roads and their need every year, and compare those to other streets in the community, and then adjust that based on the needs that we have with other roads. And so we are looking at those, that should those be identified in the pavement management plan, that we can look to complete a Streetscape project in those areas as well. So for example, the typical way that any one of these projects would run, and that we've worked on the details with CFU a little bit more, is that the first step is that then the decorative lighting can occur. So State Street, for example, starting in the fall of 2018 here, CFU will start with the decorative lighting component, get the foundations in, get any remaining overhead underground, and then in, and then the spring, summer of 2019, then the city can finish with the bench areas, brick banding around the bench and trashcan. And then I think along State Street, we also have another spot for a trashcan, which I'll just zoom in there. This is, the symbols might be a little tough to read. I tried to make it as big as possible, but I can always give you a paper copy of the plan if you'd like to see where we, in this detailed plan, have honed in a lot more detail about where a double light would be located, where a single light is feasible. The hub, which is a combination area, which has a bench, a trashcan, and a bike rack with it, all with concrete, and then brick banding around it. And then there is one spot where a trashcan's identified as well. So each of the projects will be structured this way, where it's the decorative lighting, and then it's the finishing accents of benches or trashcans, or those kinds of things that will happen. So this kind of five-year project that we have at this point, the Streetscape estimate to do just the parts that I just talked about is a little bit under $1 million. But then there are some other improvements that we will see downtown as well. Like I've mentioned already, the potential reconstruction of Second and Third Streets, and then the Streetscaping that can go along with those. Community Main Street is also looking at, while they're doing the fundraising to help with the project that I just talked about, they're also looking at replacing banners, which is a need. Some of the flowers and planting bed improvements are needed. And you see, I think, starting last year, they tried to start expanding kind of the area where flowers are located throughout the district, so you have a feeling that it's beyond just the parcade and Main Street for the downtown. So all of that, if we look at all of those components, that, and the parcade brick replacement, I'm sorry, that was, I almost neglected that one, that the city has in our capital improvement plan, starting next year, block by block, doing brick replacement in the parcade area. And if we total all of that over the next five years, we're talking about a $3 million project, which we could start to leverage that and apply for grants and support that work. So that's part of why I'm in front of you today, as well as, I thought I would end by asking the council to confirm that we should continue with the implementation of the Streetscape project, as I've outlined it, and look to get whatever grants we might be able to apply for to support the project.
Thank you, Stephanie. Any comments?
Director Sheets, regarding the Brickscape downtown, has there been any discussion, is there, I guess, a better form to do that in, so that it possibly extends its life a little bit, or are we looking at just relaying as is?
There've been discussions over the years about the type of paver to use, whether it should be clay or concrete. Right now, I believe we have concrete, so we've talked about the type, as well as the design, and if that should be different. We certainly, what we've done in our capital improvement plan was, we thought that this fiscal year that we're going to be starting here, that we'd be working on that design, and then we'd kick off a construction project starting next year.
Thank you.
Mr. Wheeler, did you have something?
Just a question, now, you've got about $1 million you're going to spend over the next five years. When is the majority of that expenditure, is it pretty even over the five years?
Well, the, kind of the roughly $1 million of the Streetscape project is kind of mostly, I guess, split evenly. We've tried to split that out over the five years, starting with State Street, then with a portion of Washington, then finishing up Washington from Fifth to Sixth, as well as Sixth Street, and then the final two years, looking at Second and Third Street, depending on if those are moving forward.
Okay. Thank you. Go ahead, Frank.
Did you talk, you mentioned a little bit about Community Main Street, the fundraiser. Out of that $3 million, is that just city money, or is that also from the fundraising that the Main Street's doing?
Yeah, that includes the total project, so Community Main Street is doing some fundraising to try to help support that amount.
And it's my understanding, they're looking at almost three quarters of $1 million, $600,000 fundraising, is that right?
Yeah, I'll let Community Main Street speak for that if they would like to, but yeah.
I think it's a great opportunity to have the city working with Community Main Street and the utilities, to really do something special downtown. And I guess, a concern that I have is applying our pavement improvement plan to every part of town. I think when you look at downtown, and the synergy that's happening down there, all the development that's happening down there, I kind of wish we could, we talked, in our goal setting, we talked about looking at things as an investment rather than as an expense. And I'd really like to see us be more purposeful in making sure that all of this improvement downtown happens in a timely manner, that it's, and I worry about Second and Third Streets being six years down the road, and all this other, little bits of development happening over a shorter, or longer period of time, when if we move some of that stuff up, that perhaps we could take advantage of this collaborative opportunity a little bit sooner. So I guess now's probably not the time, but maybe at council meeting, I would like to talk about, making a recommendation that the council have a discussion about how our pavement management plan, I know it works great, but are there parts of our community that are developing quicker than others, that we might want to look at some other model? And I know I'm rambling, but I really would like to, as the town develops, we wait six years to build the street correctly, and the rest of the downtown's growing and some other, it's done, but we still have gravel streets, you know? And so it's obviously a decision the council has to make, but I'd like us to have that discussion. I think it's a great, this is, I think, the best opportunity, or the best example I've seen in a long time, of the city working with private investment, i.e. Community Main Street. And Main Street's hoping to have three quarters of $1 million to put towards it, and so to do that in perhaps a different way, and maybe it's not reasonable, maybe city staff will say, "We just can't do it that way," but I'd like to have a discussion before we just, you know? I don't know, can I make that referral now, or should I wait for council referrals?
You can amend it now to, although this is a separate action. This is a specific action towards the two recommendations. If you are sort of calling that out to go towards the council, I think- If you are sort of calling that out to go towards the council, I think council will have enough time to, in their own minds, if that's a conversation to have at committee. Anyone further?
Question regarding, you brought up the brick durability. Do we have influence on the ice melt products that the merchants use, or is that a city provided product? And I'm wondering, when did we install these and did we get the life out of them that we expected to, when they were first installed?
Seventeen years?
There might be others that might speak, but, right, we've had the pavers in place for about 15 to 20 years, I believe. Correct me if I'm wrong. And I think the outset, a certain material was provided for the salt application, I'll call it simply.
Right.
But I think over the years, that hasn't been followed everywhere. And I'm not sure if it was felt to be effective or not, or I don't know.
I'm wondering if the new brick that they would choose, if they go that route, clay or concrete, is it important to specify what should be used for deicing? Because it'll deteriorate the brick faster slower. Just maybe a comment to put in the...
I think when we're exploring the type of material to put back, we'll be asking a lot of those types of questions.
Mark, did you have something?
I'd like to answer that. When the project first started a number of years ago, the merchants were provided with appropriate material for melting snow. The city did not monitor whether they were using them or not. And when the bricks were first put in, they were using probably the appropriate product. But as you get new businesses and new owners and new users, that message probably was lost a little bit. I do know that some merchants continue to utilize that material, but also there's just rock salt being used to.
So we could probably look to see which areas have deteriorated more so than others and determine the wrong product, possibly?
Or some people are being more quality control, or they're actually providing better snow removal in front of their businesses, some better than others, you know?
Anything else from council? There is a request from staff to motion to continue a streetscape as presented and apply for grants towards the effort. Is there a motion for that?
So moved.
Motion, second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I propose nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to item three is a discussion for fiscal year '19 cash management report. And up to talk about that is Controller City Treasurer, Lisa Roding. I said that real slow, just to get, I think we timed it just right.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, City Council, staff directors. Tonight, in front of you for your review this past weekend, was the fiscal year '19 cash management report. This is the 30th year that we have reviewed the cash management program. And just a review of the process, this is the fourth step in the process that you, as a council, go through to review cash flow. The first step happens in the fall with the fiscal, or the five-year capital improvements plan. And then the fiscal year budget is approved in the spring. And then the appropriations resolution is approved here in the spring also, which brings us to tonight's report. And in tonight's report, you'll see that the city investments have increased slightly over the past year, up from 1.08% in fiscal year '17. It's now at 1.88%. And we continue to have quite a few financial institutions bid on our investments, which is good to see. They've been very competitive with their bids also. As part of that policy, the cash management and investment policy, we, in finance and business operations, want to make sure we do preserve the interest or the principal and secure the funds. And then we want to maintain that we do have liquidity to pay for our obligations. And also, we want to get a reasonable return on those investments. As part of the plan, we've also noted that we will sell $6.85 million in general obligation bonds to finance a variety of capital projects. I'm not sure if there's anything else you want to cover in the capital improvements or the cash management plan, but if you have any answer, any questions?
Certainly open up for council for any particular questions for Lisa. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to the final item, is there a motion for bills and payroll?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I propose nay. Motion carries. We will now adjourn to the top of the hour for the regular city council meeting. Thank you.